This meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Present.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bowden.
Present.
Trustee Mike Bowden.
Present.
Present. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
And my good paper, it kind of sit there like a mountain.
Thank you.
United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fantastic. Now is our general public's sixth comment section. First one is Mrs. Millie.
Good evening, Mayor. Good to see you up and about. Uh, good morning, good evening, Board, and to the residents. There are a couple of things I want to talk about. I was quite disturbed, even though I'm aware of the site of the new village hall. But I was quite disturbed that my neighbors, my brother man that's next door down the street around the corner, did not know that our village hall had been moved. We have several modes of communication, Ms. Eva here with TV4. We also have IT. Uh, I, you know, just thought about something. Uh, one secretary told me, well, I put the, I put the, the post on Ninety Town Center, and I put it up at village hall, and so I had to respond to that by saying, so what do I do? Get in my car, drive up to Ninety Town Center, and look to see what's going on in my village? I think that we can do better at communicating with each other. For us not to know, hypothetical situation, someone owes for a ticket, got three days before they pay, come through, where's village hall? That's not acceptable. It's not acceptable. Then, when I saw that village hall had been moved, I tried to call my trustees. Tried calling. Well, let's not talk about their website, okay? With IT and the money that we pay him, or others, that website needs to be much better. It is not user-friendly. I tried to look, I found, I scanned it, tried to look for any information, had great difficulty. Finally, I saw the trustee's number, started through. You know, there was only two trustees that I called and got their number and called them. One was not there, one was. I called another trustee, and that trustee, within about fifteen minutes, called me back. But the rest, the, uh, what I get is, uh, the message is, the message is not set up where we can receive, where we can give a message to you guys. We pay for the phone. The village pays for the phone. It's not fair to us that we cannot get in touch with you, have a problem with that. Because I wanted to find out, well, how come there's no signs or nothing, arrows pointing to where the new village hall is? It's in a precarious spot. It's not everybody, only me, 'cause I'm here, there, everywhere, that I know where it is. A lot of people don't know where the new tr- the new village hall is. I'll get off of that, 'cause we're talking about that later. The agenda. It's still, okay, still can't make out what the agenda is talking about. We need an agenda that, uh, that we can understand. A not agenda, just for you guys. We, as taxpayers, need to understand the agenda, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Got a deal, work?
Good evening, Board, Mayor, residents.
Good evening.
I have a couple of questions. First off, I wanted to address what I had came up here from last board meeting where , um, with trustee LaFleur said that, I wanted to ask the question to him, has the process been established to collect, answer, and post residents' questions from board meetings to the village's website by the Friday before the next regular board meeting? Because I know you said that it was okay, seemed like something that can be done. Have you did anything to fix that problem, or to work on the problem, or to see if anything could be done? First question, I want to get all my questions in first, if you don't mind asking.
First of all, um, I did address that after the board meeting, and we are going to institute it as soon as possible. But it's not yet established yet, but I talked to the appropriate individuals to get it done.
Okay, is that something that needs like a resolution, an amendment, or orders that need to be made? It doesn't? Okay, great. So what you, you did say, what's the timeline for that?
Within one week.
Okay, great. Um, next question was to the Board. Um, last board meeting, um, I had questions about the items that was on the agenda, but because it wasn't a committee of the whole, I wasn't able to ask questions. So if a committee of the whole board meeting is canceled, can residents be extended the courtesy to ask questions at the next regular board meeting?
Let me answer your question.
Sure.
There's a couple of things. The public comment, and this actually also applies to the theory thing about regards to the questions, just because you have questions, this is a, this is a public meeting, not a meeting of the public, and there's a difference. So theoretically, um, the trustees, by answering your questions, are doing you a service. There's no requirement that they have to answer all of your questions during the meeting. It's the, the public comment is an opportunity for you to comment on things, and they may, um, address some of your questions at that time. There's no requirement that they enter into a back-and-forth dialogue with you in regards to answering a question.
Oh, I understand that, of course. So you were referring to the first question that I asked?
I'm referring to both questions, because you're asking, there wasn't an opportunity for you to ask questions. There's a public comment, so you have the opportunity to make, to express a public comment. There's no requirement that they have to go back and forth in a dialogue at a committee of the whole meeting as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're misunderstanding. So the committee of the whole is where the residents have an opportunity to ask questions about the things on the agenda.
But they don't have to go back and forth with you on it?
I didn't say that they do.
No.
My question is, it's very specific, it says, if a committee of the whole board meeting is canceled, can residents be able to speak at the next one? Give us the courtesy, because we did not have the opportunity to speak on those things.
Regular meeting, she's asking.
Yes.
That would be up to the Board to decide.
That's why I'm asking the Board. So that's something, can we do that if it's canceled? It's not always canceled, but if you, if you cancel the committee of the whole meeting, then we have an opportunity to speak. So, or ask questions. And a lot of things on that agenda, last week, I had a question for each one, but I didn't have opportunity to ask. So the next question is for the village manager. Uh, will you be attending to finance committee meeting on February 19?
I can't answer that right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
I can't answer that right now.
Oh, okay.
But I, I'll let you know.
But you'll let us know if you're there to come. Okay, great, because I have a lot of finance questions, and I don't think, I don't, I don't have time to ask them right here, but I can ask those at the finance committee meeting if you're there.
Or you can always make an appointment to come in. Always open.
That's, that's true, but other people have the same questions, so I kind of want the answer to be either at this finance committee meeting, or here at the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Scott Lawson.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Uh, Mayor, I'm glad to see that you're up and well. You're quickly. And I want to thank you for coming out to the diversity dinner. That was a nice surprise for us. And I want to thank all of the residents and the...
The residents.
The breakfast. The breakfast. I want to thank all the residents and the, uh, elected officials who did come out to the diversity dinner. That was the greatest show in University Park has ever had, and we're now, um, uh, we're known. In the South Southern, it's known. I tried to give you a laugh, okay? Let me move on. Uh, I want to say the Valentine Day, um, dance for our youth will be happening on Friday at 6:00 PM, and this is not a Village of University Park sponsored event. This event is being sponsored by the residents of University Park. It takes a village, and we're moving forth in doing that. For those of you who are concerned about that, um, you, you as trustees and, um, others who are on the Board, you're residents of University Park, so you can participate as well. And whenever we're doing something for our youth, we should not put out the negativity, because that, our youth can feel that if you're not supporting or supportive of the events that are happening for them. Uh, the other thing I want to address is communication. We're getting a little sloppy with it, and I want to bring it to your attention, because that's not how residents are supposed to be treated. When something is going on, you let us know, uh, because we deserve to know what's happening in our community. So, uh, you know, if we go to a point where we don't want to communicate with the residents, we got a real problem. I've always said that the heart of being a trustee is that we trust you to serve. So whoever that should come from, you should notify the residents when the village hall is moving, when you're, you're canceling a meeting, and on the, on the, uh, regular meeting, you're calling a first, second, third reading, and it leaves us, it leaves our hands tied. We can't say anything about it. I, I was so out of order at the last meeting, just trying to get your attention, uh, that's not me. I don't like to be out of order, but I can, and I will, if I need to. So let's communicate, so that nobody's out of order. I think would be, uh, you know, preferable, uh, I know that's what I would prefer, that I be in order, so that I don't have to, uh, have those type of conversations with Ms. Wilson, Chief Wilson. But, but let's, let's do that. And the other thing that I want to address is to our clerk, there's an issue with the FOIAs. People are not getting those FOIAs, and I think that that is so wrong. If a person put in for a FOIA, let's, let's help them out, give, give them the information that they need. Thank you for listening.
Ms. Lawson. I'm only responding to the FOIA request, and I'm not aware of any FOIA requests that have not been answered. I am aware that there are times when the requester does not get what they want, but they get what they ask for. Sometimes it does not contain the information that they want, and I must admit, excuse me, we do sometime, we might be a little late in getting the FOIAs, the answers, but I don't know of anyone who has made a FOIA request, and if it's a goddamn, or got a response.
Okay, well, I'm not going to try to fight anybody's battles. I, I heard you, and I thought I'd bring it to your attention, and so there it is.
Tasha LaFleur. Maybe I'll try and tag Lee LaFleur.
I'm sorry, you can know my name. It's Tasha.
Tasha, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. Up to the podium, Mrs. LaFleur, I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine, and I did not have a comment. This is my first meeting here.
So you were just signing in as a...
Yeah, I thought we were just signing in, so my apologies.
Thank you, no problem whatsoever. So that ends our public comment section, as we move on to the one item on special meeting agenda. Business, uh, where are we? Action items, item E1, first, second, and third readings, and ordinance approval for the annexation of certain territory, commonly referred to as southwest and southeast corners of Central Avenue and Stager Road, University Park, Illinois. Is there a motion? Posted by trustee Williams. Seconded by trustee, wait a second, now. McMullin and, and trustee, uh, Tom McMillan Jenkins.
Question.
Question, trustee Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I, I see this as a first, second, and third reading, and if the trustees can go, uh, the residents, uh, if I can just, I think, I think you read it off, is the ordinance approving an annexation of a certain territory, so that's the discussion, so they'll follow with us. I noticed that on page eight, uh, I know that we did post this in the Chicago Tribune. I, I just have a, I just feel that, I'm just giving my, uh, opinion on the way I'm gonna vote tonight, unless I hear different. It was posted on 1/29, today is the 11th, trustee Curtis McMullin's birthday, uh, why, why are we just now knowing, I mean, why is this first, second, and third reading? I just felt that this should have been at least spoke about, and I see a letter here, if you look behind exhibit A. I do see, recognize the signature, that is Mark Good, and I do see him in the audience tonight. If we have a discussion on this, because no one told me anything, and before I vote, I want to know why we annexing, and what is going on, and so forth, before we even, before I cast a vote, because, uh, it was on the 29th. Been nice if I would have known as a trustee if I'm gonna cast a vote for annexation of something. I yield my time, Mayor.
Okay, well, well, trustee, from my, my understanding, it's just a simple annexation that we've done before, actually, it's increasing the size of our town, and someone, Mr. Alan Silverman, who's been, uh, annexing land in University Park for the longest, is annexing a last piece of two and a half acres into, into the community, that's, that's pretty much it is.
And that's, uh, I did go to Google Maps. Is this the little, is this the little piece of land that's along the expressway here? Is this, is this what I'm getting? It says 2.3 acres. I want to make sure that this is what we're working on here. And why this wasn't in the committee of the whole? Or why we couldn't make this a committee of the whole? Is this something that's dealing with time or something? Why this could not be tonight, and then we go next?
It's a very time-sensitive, uh, issue, trustee.
Right, okay. Because, yeah, I, I mean, I was just wondering why, why we couldn't discuss it now, and then vote for it on a regular meeting, so that's it. Not trying to give you a hard time, Mr. Good, I know I said, take the gas pedal off of you.
Okay, trustee, just going to be like to address any else questions, then we'll move on.
Yeah, um, this is a parcel of land that, um, the current owner did not own several years ago, and because when I-57 went through, this property, at one point belonged to the farmer on the west side of the highway, and Mr. Silverman owned property, um, on the west side of the property, but he became the east side, so there's, it slid, it really cut through the two farms, and so he traded his property on the west side of I-57 for this small piece of property on the east side. So in the past, all of his existing property had been annexed into the village many years ago, and this came after that. And so to, um, to, to make this one site that's now on the east side of I-57 all in the village, which is better for the village and better for everyone, especially as part of our overall projects that we work on, we're looking to annex it in to the village at this time. Our fault for not doing it at the time that he, he did that trade with that farmer on the west side of the highway, but we realized that was an issue when we started going through our title reports recently, and so we're asking that the village annex it at this time and bring this property into the village. It would then complete all the property north of Georgia Pacific, um, up to Stager Road, would now be in the village, so we wouldn't have a piece sitting in the county. Um, that makes it, our, our property more contiguous, and everything that we would develop there would now be in the village, instead of having part in the village and part in the county. So it's just a more of a procedural issue, we appreciate your consideration, um, and obviously, time is, you know, always important to us, because, you know, we'd like to break ground in the spring or summer if we have some interest in the property, and not, and not take it any further. So if you could accommodate us tonight, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. I'll answer any other questions.
Mayor, we recognize, just a quick question. Mr. Good, is, am I reading this right? This sort of residents or no? Now I know what they're talking about, but you can't see at a certain age. Is this, is this part of that on-ramp that's going down? That's what I wanted to make clarification with. Which part is this?
No, this, this sits north of Georgia Pacific. So Georgia Pacific is to the south of this property?
Because I see here by annex, I see I-57, and it's like a little square. If somebody can help me a little bit, anybody see it?
This kind of illustrates.
I can help you, sir.
Okay.
Green area, not this, it's this little parcel right here. Here's Georgia Pacific, right here, here's central. So the highway went through, this parcel of one property across from here, this parcel on the west side. It'd be a big parcel for this guy, but we, the parcel, oh, we did that, um, it wasn't annexed, we never annexed, so. Little parcel, little picture, I know. Jordan said, it's just a, like a little item, little parcel.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That was really, yeah, maybe, that was, yeah, pardon.
Mayor, I yield my time, I'm, I'm fine. Yeah, I, I, I think it was a great, a good explanation, I just, I don't know if anybody else caught it, I just didn't know. So, you know, you can't vote if you don't ask.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin.
Both sides.
Trustee Bowden.
Both sides.
Trustee Mike Bowden.
Vote to vote.
Mayor, we need...
Vote tie.
Mr. Mayor, that is the ordinance, 2020 that 01.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Brooks. Seconded by trustee Williams and Bowden. Called in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much for attending our special meeting this evening. We'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll go on to our regular scheduled power meeting. Thank you so much. Committee of, committee of the whole is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams. Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bowden.
Present.
Trustee Mike Bowden.
Present.
Here. Okay, we're ahead. Okay. Caleb, let me see, we're not going to do the pledge of allegiance, we've done it once already, so we're not going to be...
Thank you.
President, go ahead. Okay, now we have the general public comment, we have, Clea Gross.
Hello, Mrs. Eva. Hello. I want to state that I'm selling your scout cookies for truth.
Yeah, here you go. Just move back from the microphone, but take your time, and, and just express what you want to express.
I want to state that I'm selling your scout cookies for truth, 60194. The cause is to help the military, and to donate the money that we get from the police to send to the military, or any donations that we receive to the military.
Okay, is that, is that it? Do you have cookies with you?
Yes.
Fantastic. And I give you one suggestion. I saw this on the news now. Since your, your troop is at Homewood?
Yes.
There's an opportunity to now talk to your mom. Yeah, thank you very much, and we'll try to support as much as possible, and it's good to see that young ladies are still participating in the Girl Scouts. Thank you very much. Okay, business discussion items, uh, discussion ordinance amending Part 2, Title 4, Chapter 210, Section 210-1 Standing Rules, setting meeting dates for regular meetings of the Board of Trustees and Committee of the Whole of the Village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties, Illinois. The floor is open.
Mayor, you look my way.
Trustee Brooks? Well, I was actually, I was looking your way, because I was surprised no one was at the podium, so...
Oh, okay. Mayor, I won't be long on this one.
Excuse me, one second, trustee, one second, one second. And, you know what, let's stay in complete order, as everybody else says, we're supposed to have three minutes as to respond and communicate, so that if we're gonna hold them for three minutes, let us do the same thing as anybody else. And only two members of the board can respond.
I thought we have five standing rules. Oh, you know I read it, it's not... We gonna read every, right, right, chief? We read everything to make sure we can execute the laws. Yeah, if I get a new mic, uh, stand, thank you. Mayor, yeah, I'll be short on this one. All I can say is that I got a chance to speak to some of my constituents, especially, I attended a, attended a basketball game, I got input from a little bit of everybody, youth basketball game, thank you, sir, um, as well as, uh, talked to a couple people throughout the village, and, uh, one resident I have in my notes said, unless someone correctly, 42 years, we had, uh, the meeting on the second and the fourth for 42 years, second and fourth, uh, they said that it would interfere with the library board and the school board, that's just their input. I see, Mayor, though, uh, you had, gave in consideration, the current schedule and proposed schedule, so, um, I yield my time, I just, it's up to the other trustees, but I, I pretty much know how my constituents feel, and, uh, how they want me to vote. Should this be on the agenda next board meeting?
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or concerns from any other board members? Now, I'll look up to, uh, the general public here. I have a... Yes, sir, Mr. Trustee.
How you doing, everyone?
Fine.
I took this on advisement, and there's an old adage out, the only thing that's worth changing is change itself, so I think it's time, and I know my partner mentioned 40 some odd years for Tuesday, and, uh, I mean, for the second and the fourth, uh, meeting, but I think it should be given consideration for the first and the third, having the means then, so it will accommodate the attorneys in question, because I don't, I don't fear that the, the village will miss out not having it on the second and the fourth Tuesday. I mean, uh, the second and the fourth are Tuesday, yes. Let's give it, let's give it complete consideration for the first and the third consideration for the, um, for meetings, I mean, for, yeah, for the board meetings.
Mayor? Okay. Yes, trustee Williams.
I had my residents come up to me, and they were very upset that I did not try to tell them that the office had changed to 44 County. I'm now, for the resident myself, I did not know, out of my control, did nobody tell me. So I just want everybody to know, I wasn't trying to keep anything from anybody, just wanted to let you know.
Thank you very much, and I'll make one comment, and I will go to public. And I understand, change is hard, at first, messy in the middle, and gorgeous in the end, so we will work out what benefits everybody in this community. Uh, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I'd like to just state that... I'd like to just state that the taxpayers' dollars paid for the lawyers, and any business that they need to conduct that's of a special nature, I, I think as an alternative, why not have a special meeting? You know, where if they cannot be here on the second and the, uh, fourth, then have a special meeting. We've had those before. Why would this Board want to turn everybody's life around in University Park, not consider the fact that we have school board meetings, not consider the fact that we have library meetings to attend? You're not, you're not, you're not, you're not valuing us. And that's a bad feeling. And that makes us, and if they can't, just like I told the gentleman that was here, he wasn't here. He said, well, Ms. Morgan, we have four hundred, um, uh, uh, other clients. And I told him, then you won't miss us. Because, uh, in the state of Illinois, lawyers are a dime a dozen. So we can get, and we've had a, a, a dime's worth of lawyers in the last nine years. So we can get new lawyers that can conduct business in this village according to the time that is conducive for, uh, the residents. We're not feeling valued at all. All sorts of things have gone on in the last nine to ten years, and we're not being valued. But guess what? It's our dime, it's our dollars. And you're not valuing us. I don't understand, and, and if you can tell us, what is the reason that the lawyers want to change our lives?
Sure.
So, Morgan, I'm not trying to change your lives, it's just that, and so I'm, my schedule is in regards to, um, my second Tuesdays are open, I'm always here, um, I can always be here. I've, I had a couple of, I had a medical procedure one month, so I, that's why I didn't make it. But I can be here almost all the second Mondays. My fourth Tuesday, there's gonna be some, I have a conflict with a, another client, a, a school district in Dalton. And the thought was that for consistency, um, I can be here definitely all first and third Tuesdays, or, um, another attorney, Michael, could be here all first and third Tuesdays, so you would have more consistency and representation. That way it wasn't, uh, trying to disrupt. We will be, someone will be here no matter what, is what, I, 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 I want you to understand that. We don't want to lose you as a client, and it's not meant as a matter of disrespect. I enjoy being here, it's just that I also have another commitment on that fourth Tuesday. That was the problem for me, and, you know, one of the things that, um, that I told the trustees, um, when they, when they brought our firm on, is that I was gonna do whatever I can to be here. So I, if you, if the board keeps it to the fourth Tuesday, there will be some fourth Tuesdays that there may be another attorney from the firm. And I'm sure that's happened with other firms as well. But, but I was hoping to just be consistent in there, um, in regards so that you would always have me, or you would always have Michael, and that's why I took our firm.
Whatever lawyer is with that firm, when you guys have your meetings together, because you all go out and converse, you have meetings about your, uh, clients, you'll discuss it. So whatever lawyer comes here, really, to be honest with you, I'm surprised that our mayor would even, I think that our mayor, Mayor, I think that you should have told them, no, uh, let's go ahead along with whatever lawyer you can, uh, bring in, because we're not doing a whole lot of business. Not in University Park. And you know yourself, each, you all know yourselves, each and every lawyer that sits there, what do you see? They're sitting there, looking at us, taking in information, jot down a note or two every now and then. So, I mean, what is the big difference? Why would you disturb our life? I'm talking to the mayor. Why would you disturb our lives like that? It's not fair. You're not thinking about us. I don't know what else is going on, but you're not thinking about us.
And I, I'll just respond to this, cause I'm not gonna, I don't wanna go back and forth really, but, I'm thinking about you all better than anybody has ever thought of you guys before, and this will better this whole community in the future. Trust the process. I just ask you to give us a chance.
Money isn't everything. We need stability.
Okay.
We need stability in this village. We don't even know how, even know how to spell that word, let alone know what that word mean and, uh, uh, transparency. Those words are a joke. And I'm not gonna go back and forth, and I'm not gonna get hot now, because I've already discussed it with, uh, the board. But if you guys let us down, if you do not value us, if you do not take in consideration our children, our husbands, our lives, and how the school board, along with the library board, it's all kind of meshed together so that we can attend those things. If you don't value that, then I don't value you.
Trustee, I think you're all right. Uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion. I'm gonna ask for a motion to, uh, take a quick recess, we got any problems going on here?
Motion, uh, Mayor, I make that motion. It's only a second.
Second. This is a motion and a second for five to ten-minute recess for health reasons, for one of the trustees. Thank you. Called in favor?
Aye.
Well, appears that all is well. And that she's checked out, and she declined to go to the hospital, so, um, her dedication outweighs everything. What time is it, Madam Clerk? Where we convene, eight twenty-four. Just get off the conversation, first item.
No, I didn't get.
Okay, okay, we have to go back to the drawing. This is Morgan, this is the last one. So, Mrs. Lawson. Mrs. Lawson?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm a little more feisty than when I was up here the first time. You don't touch the nerve. You know, uh, what I'm witnessing here is a total disconnect with the residents. That's what I'm witnessing. You're saying to us that we don't trust the process? Give me something to trust. You're gonna cause the, the, the takeaway, the stability, and not even care about what we as the residents think? I come to the village hall meetings so that I can know what's happening in my village. I am concerned. I could find a myriad of other things to do with my time than to be here, but I've made a choice. I also have a library board meeting and a school board meeting. My son is still in high school. I need to be at those meetings. I need to be at all three of those meetings. And that is very important to me. What is it, and I still don't understand, what the process I need to trust? That you would flip that over for me, turn it upside down, so that I can be at these board meetings? I'm a voice. One voice, but a powerful voice. And I need to be here at these board meetings so that I can hear what's going on in my community. The other thing that I wanted to address, when this first appeared on the agenda, and Mayor, I met with you about that, so that you could understand my passion about that, how I felt like we weren't valued, as Ms. Millie said. First, second, third reading, and no one ever talked to me as a constituent about, you know, how would this affect your life? And then I heard one trustee who said, well, now he's talked to, uh, uh, his constituents, but it was after, it was already on the agenda for the first, second, and third, and that's when we had to be rude and holler out and shout out in order to get your attention. I think that is so wrong. I mean, why do you want to take me to that level? I'm a nice person. I want to come up here in a, a nice calm voice and talk to you, and now you just got me all, uh, discombobulated. And I don't like that. Are you concerned that you're collaborating with us, the residents?
I'm very concerned.
Cause that's not happening. I think I need to let you know that. That's not happening. You are totally leaving us out. I mean, just, I can, I can name off some of the times where you're just totally leaving us out, and I don't understand that. You know, I thought, uh, I met with you before you even became mayor. And that conversation went a little bit like this. Did I do some things wrong? Of course I did. Would things be different? Of course they will. I remember that. That's the process I trusted, even though I was running for mayor too. But I'm willing to work with whoever's up there, because that's how you collaborate and make things better. Don't destroy the opportunity for honest communication. See, when you start doing things like this, you destroy your opportunities for honest communication. Then we start going to that dark hole that we just came from. Yes. I don't think we need to go back there. Individually, we are one drop, but together, we are an ocean, and the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. I hope you'll consider us better.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I'll say this, um, um, at least on, uh, in all fairness, you put it on the agenda. Um, you can, you can put it on there and, and, and let a vote happen. That's what you want to do, uh, but, uh, excuse me, not you, with trustees, if that's what you want to do. Uh, I think everyone knows my stance.
All right. Item five A two, discussion, audit, weekly status of golf course advisory committee. Committee. It was to my understanding that the committee had been dissolved, and there were no eyes and ears, and no one that represented the Village of University Park on one of our last major investments. So I would like the committee to be reestablished, so we can have people appointed there who have expertise in business, restaurant hospitality, and, uh, and golf side. So that's why I got it, have it on the agenda for open for discussion, so everybody can have their input. And it just won't sit on an island by itself, because that's part of University Park as well, and it's been, in my opinion, neglected. We pay a pretty, pretty dying hanging for that. Have there any other comment, questions?
Mayor, we have recognized?
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah. I give my opinion, Mayor, um, we, uh, I, I agree, we did dissolve that, but we also, uh, I think what happened was, is that, uh, I had mentioned it before, that there was greatness management at that golf course when University Park was in charge. And I think the one year, we spent almost like one point six million dollars, and we had an advisory committee. And we didn't do anything with it, uh, correctly with the funds, so, uh, I will, uh, just express that, uh, I believe that we're at the point that the trustees, uh, should be the bosses of that golf course. And right now, we, uh, it should be the village manager and, and the board of trustees that manage that golf course. We have, uh, two businesses, two contracts up there. Uh, the one contract is, uh, dealing with golfing, and then we have, uh, Red Star, Redwood, whatever is the restaurant portion. Um, I'm very, very, uh, uh, passionate about this golf course, cause I, I was greatly embarrassed, and that's why we have the restaurant part up there, was that, uh, the people who were managing the golf course itself was managing the course and the restaurant, and they were horrible. They were horrible. And what I felt was that the last board, it was time to put the, put someone in there to manage the restaurant portion. That's how Red Star got in there, because the, eh, Billy Casper, that's who managed initially. And I'm gonna say that my wife retired, had a retirement party up there, and it was the worst experience. Not only was the worst experience, but the, the, the place, the kitchen, everything was nasty. And I only was in office, you know, what, uh, uh, two years? So, you know, we can't fix everything overnight in University Park, but I think the best thing we had did was that the committee was dissolved, and we left it up to the board of trustees and the village manager to manage it. And I did check, and if, um, Attorney Miller, if you can, uh, correct me on this, so I know we have two companies in there. Uh, I just think it's bad that we pick residents and say that they would be advisory to the golf course. I think, I think the seven trust, the seven members of this board.
Excuse me, trustee?
Yeah.
It wouldn't be to advise to the residents, it would be advisory to the board of trustees.
Well, okay, well, then, I don't think we need advisory, but if you have eyes, you know if it's right or wrong up there. And I can tell you now, my wife is here, we're still a little ticked off because the last village manager, now I haven't been up there, the last village manager would not take care of what happened. It was horrible. So we went to the mayor. And if the mayor wasn't involved, measures would not have been taken. I think they have improved up there. We voted, and, and for the people to understand, we may say money is being pumped out for the golf course. The contract says, and, and forgive me, uh, it's been kind of a little long night, so I can't remember the numbers. But we'll make the hypothetical of, if I'm not mistaken, Red Star has fifteen thousand if they keep it in the bank. They use this certain amount of money, if there's a profit, your taxpayer dollars don't go back into, we don't cut them a check. That's a profit. It goes for them to continue to work. The golf courts, they have to make a certain amount of dollars. Uh, Billy Casper, that they have to meet this threshold. If they don't meet the threshold, we have to replenish their bank account as well. So, worst-case scenario, and my, uh, uh, financial trustee on the last board, it was trustee Milton Payton. We did worst-case scenario, worst-case scenario, let's say for twelve months, they did not meet that threshold. It would be about four hundred and some odd thousand, but that has not happened. That has not happened. What is happening at that golf course, and I think as trustees, and I think, uh, Ms. Lawson made it clear, they trust us to, uh, indeed manage this village while they carry their everyday life. Me personally, I feel that someone different needs to handle or do outside of Billy Casper. Now that's just my personal opinion. Red Star have not, and I will not lie, Mayor, I did, because this came on the agenda for discussion, I did have a chance to purchase Red Star food. Now, I did talk to another trustee, and I agree with them, the price of that food, uh, it was a sandwich, some fries or something of the sort, uh, that was, it was pricey. But it was delicious. But we need, as trustees, to sit back and understand the situation we left to the situation that we have come. We have come a long ways, and I think that having the committee would not help us in any way. I think we have made the best solution. I do feel that Billy Casper and all his golf course looks great. If you come from, um, uh, was it, uh, the, what's one? He has one in, uh, Indiana. Looks great. Well, please tell me, what's the problem with University Parks? Why you can't give us the same? And also as trustees, I'm, I'm gonna wrap it up, cause I see people looking at their watch, but I like to be in detail for you to know what we have invested in with your money. Worst case scenario with your money. Best case scenario is, we pay nothing to the golf course. But at least, it's not wasting 1.6 million dollars no more. And I don't care what we do. Now, I will say that, I think that if the trustees want to do anything, that if we want to have one person to overlook it, I think that's an idea. I have spoke to a couple people. Because I do feel that in the day-to-day, Madam Village Manager, she's ripping and running. Trustees, we're busy. Yes, we can stop in sometime. But, you know, maybe if we do have one person to overlook and oversight, and then come to us and tell us, "Trustees, I think this is what you probably need to do as an advisor." I think maybe that, to me, that would be a good idea to do instead of a committee itself.
Can I be recognized?
Yes, trustee.
Thank you trustee. My train of thought is slightly different on this topic. I believe that, I don't see any harm in an advisory committee. When I think about advisory, I think about people that have an expertise in a specific area that will be able to advise our decisions. If there are no one, if there are not people on the board that have specific expertise in this, in this specific arena, then that may play a major role in our decision-making. I think that government at its, at its most common level has, you think about the president, have advisors and a cabinet to advise, to help make decisions, to make sure that we're making the right decisions. I think this will also allow some of the residents that we have in the village that bring some, some very great things to the table. If we are able to identify some advisors that can really help us with our strategies and be strategic about successfully running the golf course. I don't see any harm in it. And those are just my thoughts around this topic.
Mayor, can I respond? One second, Madam Clerk.
I would just like to address trustee Brooks too, and also to the residents. The golf course advisory committee is like other committees. It's not to manage the golf course. It's not to oversee the employees. Having been a member of the golf club advisory committee, I think trustee Brooks said that on that board too. What you had, what this board had, was a monthly or bi-monthly report on what we saw, the operations as they were. We made suggestions to this board on the finances. We had a certified public accountant who also run this committee, who gave a monthly report of the actual status of the finances to keep the board informed along with what the golf course might have requested or paid them to manage. But at least they had an independent group of people who were trained in. And I'm also a golfer, so I know. And I do know that that golf course is in fantastic condition. It's in much better condition than most of the golf courses in this area. So I think Billy Casper, and even before Billy Casper, the golf club, the golf course was an excellent course. And it still is for golfers. I'm also an excellent business manager. So knowing the operations and what should be, that's all the committee did was a regular meeting and gave their reports to the board. Then it was up to the board to make decisions as to if we would have followed. But we did not oversee the employees. We had nothing to do with that. So it's a committee like your finance committee, your public services, your public safety, your seniors, is to see what's going on as another volunteer committee.
Can I be recognized?
Yes trustee, yes trustee.
How often did you meet as a committee?
We met monthly.
Monthly?
Yes.
And you gave a monthly report, right?
Monthly or bi-monthly, yes.
And you didn't have any say-so in operations of?
None, none. And we submitted minutes of meetings to the board. They were included in the board act.
How would the individual be selected for that committee, question?
Like, they were selected, filled out an application to serve. And this was one that I will say that the mayor looked at your background in liquor, in food, in finances.
Can I be recognized?
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Yes trustee.
Yes, I was on that committee with me, like you said. And the answer to your question is, the mayor at that time was Al McCowen. And they had, he interviewed everybody that came to that committee. And he did the choosing. So, he did the background and all of that. So that's the answer to your question.
Trustee, Madam Clerk, what years was this, the golf course committee happened? 05 to? June of 17? Okay. Now, let me say, to trustee Franklin, I agree with you when you say you want somebody with their expertise to help decide. But again, what's wrong with the trustees being involved? When it comes to the golf course? That's just a discussion. What's wrong with them? Because I'm gonna tell you now, the decisions that we're making, instead of asking the residents to do it, we can do it ourselves. If you want to go and find out about the golf course and make it, because when it comes down to it, those contracts are going to expire. And you as a trustee, it's your duty to know what has been going on with that golf course. And I can say now, in my opinion, I have stopped in. There's some bad, there's some good. But I don't need a committee to tell me. Because once again, I have a trust issue. And I'm gonna tell you my trust issue. During, again, those years that we're sitting here talking about the golf course, we lost money. We lost 1.6 million. So it didn't matter who was on the committee. It took trustees to say, "This is what we need to do." "The people trust us, this is what we need to do." And last year, or was it 20, 2018? When we had that retirement party? I was for Billy Casper running the golf course and the restaurant. But I'm sorry, the restaurant, it took a trustee walking in there and the mayor of the town to walk in there, do an event, a private event, that you pay 1,700 dollars to. No, because you gotta pay money. Because if you don't pay money, and they don't make money, you, your tax dollars, is the dollars that we have to pay in. So that's 1,700 dollars that we paid. The glasses was dirty, the forks was dirty, the kitchens were nasty, the chicken was cold. So that's our job to do. So I don't need a, I'm just saying, we don't need, that's the purpose of us. And I'm not objecting, I'm just having a discussion saying that I know we always want to expand on bigger ideas and try to go, we talking about change. That's one of the ideas we had in the back. And I just feel that at this point, I mean, we can, you can reinstate it. But if it's not broke, why try to fix it? We keep trying to reinvent the wheel here every time. And the thing is, is that we got, I think as Red Stars, the contractors coming up. And best advice is, is that a trustee walk in and see, and try to have a, sit down and have a dinner. Or if they want to continue, because I know some trustees, when it's something ain't right, they open their mouth and say it, and they'll let me know, "Hey, I didn't like it." They'll say it. But I agree, when we come to the residents to have them involved, this is dealing with money. The last time we had residents involved, 1.6 million dollars. So that's just me, and I must be tired because I'm rambling. But I want to tell the truth.
Okay.
I want to tell the truth.
Point well, taking that respect, trustee, absolutely. So shall we move, anybody else? General public, no one from the public on the golf course? Madam, Mrs. Trust?
Okay.
Would you mind coming to the mic, please?
Oh.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I want to say that when the residents volunteer their valuable time, their time should be worth something and should be listened to. Now I sit on that very same committee. And I sit there with you, with the village manager, and Al McCowen, and Mrs. Barnett. I sit on that very same committee. And there were a lot of things that happened. My son got married, and, well, that was a different one. But, and it messed up his tooth, so I know how you feel. Messed up his reception. But, so I know how you feel. But we still went back, my husband still gave him a birthday party there. It was okay. But I was in there a couple weeks ago, and it wasn't of my liking. It wasn't what it used to be. Now, one thing we did have was service. And on that committee, on that committee, I was the village manager, it was the finance director, and the mayor. Now, everybody there played golf but me. Yeah. But I spent a lot of nights in accounting, so I know, you know, I have a business degree. So I do know when you're doing something wrong and when you're not. And there were a lot of things that did not happen, and we did not take advantage of the situation. There were a lot of losses there. And I've been there recently. And we sit there for how long, trying to get waited on? And I'm gonna tell you, you talk about how nice Red Star is, but it's different from his other restaurant down there than the restaurant out here. Now, I frequent restaurants all the time. And that's a place that I'd like to go to. And I like to tend, it's close by, and I can dot over and dot home. And I like the advisory committee. But you have to have someone who's willing to do it and who is, has the expertise. And nobody feels like, I would not want to waste my time volunteering if you're not gonna listen to me. Because I would not get on the committee if I did not have the expertise. Now, when you come to a restaurant, and food certified by the state of Illinois, okay, sanitation, I've had restaurants all my life. That's how you raise 14 kids. So, but you've got to listen to the people when they own these committees. They're only telling you these things for a reason. And it's been less than a month that I was up there. And I sat there for 20 minutes before they recognized us, and we were sitting there. And I'm pretty good size. And they offered me some fried pickles, come on. You've got to listen to the people if you put them on those committees. Now, some committees work well. And you listen to them, and that helps you make the final decision. But the finance director was on there, and the village manager was on there, and some golfer was on there. And, well, the two-seaters were on there and all that. But you, you gotta listen. Yeah, and yeah, Madam there, Clerk, you were there. You were a sponsor, or an advisor, whatever. But you must listen. If you're not gonna listen, forget it. Okay?
So what? Mayor, oh, I was gonna say, Mayor. See, when I hear that, that make my blood boil. And this is what I'm saying, the power of the trustee and the mayor. That's, the last time something like that happened, here's why I say as trustees, we step in. Because I agree, now, mistrust done came up here, we know mistrust, mistrust is not gonna lie about anything. And again, I voted for the restaurant because the people who was running it, of Billy Casper, wasn't doing their job. And I'm hearing she doing it.
Trustee, just focus on the committee.
I am, I am. Please don't, because I'm gonna drift if you interrupt me. That's a good line. No, but she just made a complaint. And that's why I feel this, as trustees, that's where we step in. And Madam Village Manager, and what his name, I don't want to say his name. But he needs to come in and see us, or see you, about stuff like this because that's not the first time. It shouldn't take an advisory committee to get that. But here it is, a trustee got a response, a resident respected in the community, had that experience. I think as trustees at that point, because we have two people in there on the contract, we need to handle business.
All right, trustee, let's cut it off now, let the board pleasure be, see what they want to do. Board, how do you want to deal with it? Moving to the agenda? Is that the consensus?
Yes.
All right, consensus to move to the agenda. Next item. Item 5A3, Discussion or Resolution Authorized the Sale of Surplus Real Estate Commonly Referred To As 5241 West Thumpel Road, University Park, Illinois. And if anyone's, if everyone's not familiar with it, there is a white house, when you go west on Cicero, after you go past the Golo, on the south side of the street, that's village-owned property. And there's been multiple offers for the property. So that's opening up the discussion. So, board, pleasure, who's the?
Mayor, you recognize?
Yeah.
Yeah, who's the, a couple questions. Who's the, who's gonna be the broker? I know it's the general.
Well, I would throw those questions to, that's more of a day-to-day operations thing. So I'll let manager Fulham move forward with that.
Well, in that this is a public bid, there is no need for a broker. What we're having here is, we would let it for bid. And the law says that we cannot, we're gonna have to have an appraisal done on the property. And the law says that we cannot agree to sell this piece of property less than 80% of the appraised value. So it's set, you know, we don't have a broker for sale. It's a different circumstance than in private sector.
Well, with this strike, item C, because it says the property described in exhibit A shall be listed with a real estate broker slash agent approved by the board of trustees and copy the listing agreement, which contains the terms and the conditions said and the relationships, including and not limited to the brokers slash realtors commission is attached here of and made a part of exhibit B. So do we strike that then? Or is that general letter? My guys here, Miller?
There is, there is an exception. Generally, that's the language that we do, is for most instances, we do that. The village manager is right, it has to sell at least for 80% of the value. You're not required to, but generally speaking, most of our clients do end up listening to a broker, hoping to get the highest bid. But you can do it for bid as well. There is language that would allow you to do it for bid. So it's your choice. We would just revise the language if you so desire.
Yes, yes, because we've both known it. So would it be just an auction? Would that word be replaced with auction? Or would we revise the language?
We would revise the language on that. And I could, what I could do is have that language, I know you guys have the Dropbox, where I can send it to the village manager, the new paragraph, which he can get to you guys.
Okay. And, so the? so, and actually, in the direction of it, section three, that is correct, though, that the, so we would give, we would turn all of the power to Ms. Ernestine to handle, and then she bring it to us, right?
All right.
So that the, the, so that they know, this is what the,
Absolutely.
This is what the general public's knowledge.
And, and trustee, let me mention, I'm always looking at a bottom line. If we get a broker, we're gonna have to pay the seven percent, uh, and, we're gonna have to pay the legal fee for closing, so, what we're trying to look at, since we have the ability to in fact do this, and, have the ability to do this, that we do it based on municipal requirements, get our max dollars, because that's what we're looking to go at, the appraised value. Even though the law says eighty percent, we can request that they get, we pay us one hundred percent, I'm just repeating what the law is. But we're going for the highest of the bidder. This is not an instance where we go out and look for the low bidder. It's the highest bidder will get the job, so keep that in mind.
Yeah, I apologize if that was, the eighty percent, and you can't sell it for under eighty percent.
Absolutely.
So, just make sure that you would obviously try to get as much as you can, but you can't sell it for under eighty percent. That's a false save, so that no one's getting kind of that sweetheart deal.
So, this became our property through, uh, like, the tip area, right? Is that what, did I hear that right? Yeah, okay. I give my time, man. Yeah, that old raggedy white house. I mean,
It used to be, uh, Mrs. Trust?
Because that house has some value to it, because that house was on the corner of South Trail, and we moved, they moved it down there. Is there something special about that house, that maybe it was a daddy? Those of us who've been down here a long time.
They used to sell the booby eggs.
Yeah, it was a dog kennel.
Right.
It was a dog, and it had big old, like, large toes, with the, with the hair, the dark hair.
It was on the corner of South Trail, and, and they moved it to there.
Oh, they moved it from that, okay, to there.
It was like a big tall house?
Yeah, a big white house.
But I just want to mention too, trustee, I mean, uh, Miss Trust, the value of the land is key here. The value of the land is key. I'll, I'll leave the house alone, I don't want to mention anything public about that. But the land does have great value.
Okay. Anybody else on this, uh, Mayor? Shall we move on? All right. Last, uh, item five eight four, a discussion or resolution approved and authorized the execution of the agreement by and between the Village of University Park and Bryser LLC. Understand? I mean, Madam?
Let, let me make a comment about that. I just want to make a comment about that. There's gonna have to be some revised language in there, because there's a differential between, um, the actual resolution and the agreement. There is some language that technically needs to be consistent in both, both documents. In the initial resolution, the amount of the sixty-five dollars in language should be included, and I talked with the attorney. And in the agreement, it has the sixty-five dollars, but what we're asking for is that increment. We, University Park, is the lowest end, one of the lowest ends of the totem pole in terms of cost. No one ever looked at it, it was bottom. And yet, we've been expending dollars to compensate for this price that we're asking for, I mean, that existed. So, what we're asking the board to look at, and we'll give you the amended language, I talked to the attorney today, and we're gonna have the, we're gonna do the language. We're gonna have the language in the resolution to reflect the language in the, uh, agreement. We're gonna increase the amount to sixty-five dollars, because when the fire department, in fact, um, gets these dollars for these, they get a percent of those dollars. Those percent of, of those dollars that come in, we're asking that those dollars be paid, placed in a special fund in the department, and then, that those dollars that come in can be used for fire equipment and/or appropriate, uh, reporting equipment that the village won't have to pay, that we can use those dollars to purchase that. So, it's really going to be used for the fire department, but the village will not have to, to pay those costs as we pay now for reporting and such, so. And it's amazing, it's been that, in research, it's been that cost for quite some time. No one ever asked, so I, I've been meeting with the fire chief, and we got the attorney, so we were able to get that, and, uh, it's with you now to look at.
So, there needs to be some revision in the language?
Yes, and you'll have it in enough time that you can look at it. You'll have, believe me, we're gonna work on it this week, you'll have it in enough time, so that if you have any questions, you can call me personally or whatever to clarify. You know, you'll have enough time, believe me.
Don't you have an apple time? All right.
Can I make a statement? I gotta say this. And I've complained about it before, I stated something, and maybe, uh, maybe you guys not understanding, you're having a meeting among yourselves. Do anybody in here know what they're talking about? I don't, I don't know who Bryser is. LLC, I know LLC, and William J., but I don't know who LLC is, Bryser. You all talking about what he even did, and she even did, and we don't know what you're talking about. If you can start out with a statement. Ms. Morgan is a resident of University Park, and then go on and talk about her, about other incidents and things, you know what I mean? But you gotta tell us what you're talking about, though, because we have no idea.
Understood.
So, the compliance, Ms. Morgan, I'm sorry, um, the Compliance Engine is a program by the Bryser company. It's used by a lot of fire departments in the area in regards to, um, kind of helping and coordinating their fees and recovery for, um, for monies to receive by the fire department. Um, I've got a few other clients that have been extremely happy with it. I know, um, Bartlett, Atasca, and Oakbrook Terrace are, are the ones that I personally have, that I've worked with, and I know some other attorneys in the firm have, um, have some fire chief they've talked to that they're very happy with it, but, it's a, it's a, they call it, Bryser is the name of the company, the actual product or the software, I guess, is called the Compliance Engine. And that's, um, what's used for that purpose. Uh, it's kind of to help facilitate collecting of fees. I don't know if the chief has, has anything to add on that, but, um, we have a lot of clients that use the Compliance Engine's product, and it's kind of helped them streamline that process.
That fire department goes after those dollars, don't they? Go ahead. Yeah, yes, Mrs. Lawson?
And so, what is this, what is the agreement?
You sign a contract with the Bryser, and they, then they kind of administer the, those, those fees and things for the village.
Yeah, we're asking for an increase up to sixty-five dollars. An increase in the fees that we charge. Uh, why don't you go further, uh, this is your opportunity now.
Okay, I'll just add a few comments to everything that's already been said. Uh, we're partnering with Bryser to help us basically achieve more of a compliance rating in the village for things that have to be inspected. Whether it's a fire alarm system, a sprinkler system, any kind of, uh, you know, systems that contain emergency lightings. Right now, either through us or a company's insurance company, they have to have certain components inspected, sometimes once a year, sometimes more. In order to make sure that they're doing these things, we have to send people and staff out into the field to all of these companies, you know, and physically check that they have these records, and then we have to get copies of those records. And then we have to find somewhere to store all that paper when we do collect it. So, our partnership with Bryser is gonna require the contractors that do inspections to upload those inspections to their portal system. There's a fifteen-dollar fee that Bryser charges these companies to make an upload to that portal. That is a, that is a cost that is taken on by the contractor, not the village. So, what we're doing is, we're gonna, we're making an agreement with them to make that a sixty-five-dollar fee. So, Bryser keeps their, their fifteen-dollar flat rate, and then they're making a collection on behalf of the village to handle all of the reporting and the notifications, and a lot of administrative stuff that we don't have to dedicate with staff anymore. Once this is up and running and it's in place, you know, we can have our staff members concentrate on other code enforcement issues in the village and just make us more efficient.
Okay. So, shall we move it all? Okay, this is consensus. Last but not least, we have a presentation by Asvar. You're welcome.
Thank you so much. I won't take too much of your time, I know. Um, it's been a long day. Um, we met with Mayor, um, a couple of weeks ago, in regards to Asvar Government Solutions. Yes, oh, Tom Fagan, from Asvar Government Solutions. F as in Frank, A-G-A-N. I presented to the board a couple of years ago, um, and time had gone on, um, and I'm coming back um, to you to present the program again. Um, we are a company that's been around for approximately twenty-five years. I've been, been doing audits of utilities like Comcast, Nycor, Comcast, um, Comcast, Nycor, ComEd, um, making sure that all the addresses within University Park are being coded correctly. If they misspell an address, if they don't geocode the address correctly, then the, uh, village is not getting what they should deserve. Um, basically, what we do is we have proprietary software that we're able to, with expediency, look at the, um, the addresses from the provider like ComEd, and identify the addresses that are incorrect, thus giving you back the money that you so are in need of. Um, the beauty of the program is its contingency, so if it, so if we don't find anything, it costs nothing. All the other audit companies that you'll come across, none of which are in Illinois, will do an audit for you, charge you a dollar amount, and give you the results and say good luck. We are the ones that actually go and get that money for you. Um, if there's back money to be gotten, three to four years, um, all we ask is that we share in what we find. So, um, we, it's a normal split of fifty-five for the municipality, forty-five percent for Asvar, um, for a three-year period in each stream of revenue. Um, I don't know how many, um, trustees were in my first presentation a couple of years ago, I remember you. Can't forget you. Um, and we have a lot of, um, municipalities in the area. Glenwood, Ford Heights, uh, Menlothian, Crestwood, Stock Village, Matson, um, and have all found some sort of savings. Um, so the beauty of the program, like I said, is we don't charge you anything, but we want to share what we have found. So, you could not do the program and it be zero percent. You could do the program and still be zero percent, but if you find money that you wouldn't be, that you wouldn't know is due to you, um, isn't fifty-five percent, and then a hundred percent after that, after three years, money that's in your pocket, so. That's the basis of what we do. Does anybody have any questions? It was, yes. Mayor Covington wanted to do it, um, at the time, and then the transition happened. Well, she was thinking of, of the good for the municipality, so that you could get money back that is, that is due to you. Um, we found nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars of gross operating revenue from Comcast, um, in Springfield, um, where they misappropriated, uh, not misappropriated, but miscalculated the formula in that area. We found Matson, forty-two thousand dollars of, uh, AT&amp;T revenue, um, when they had POTS lines that were open in two thousand and five. So, things like that, we're able to find.
Yes, trustee.
Out of the contract with the village, how much did you find for University Park?
We, we, we haven't found anything for University Park yet. But that's what I was hoping to do now, so. We've done it for over three hundred municipalities in Illinois, and have found over a hundred million dollars of savings in that time. Um, we also look at IDOR, Illinois Department of Revenue, to make sure that every address within University Park is coded to University Park. Um, there's a suburb that borders Chicago, you can think of it right by I-55 and Cicero, I don't have to say the name of it, that, um, they have five addresses that were being coded to, um, Chicago and not that municipality, so we're able to give back that money to the municipality. When municipalities share zip codes, when, um, they don't, um, keep up on annexations, that's where the miscoatings happen, and ultimately, we're the gatekeepers to make sure those dollars are coming back to the, uh, village.
So, is no, is no upcoming, no up, no, no cost at all upfront, and then if, if nothing is found, then there's no cost at all?
There is no cost at all. We do a ninety-day update. Um, we also give the manager and the mayor a ninety-day update as we go along, so they know where we are within each audit. So, it's about eight different audits, ComEd, Comcast, franchise fees, Illinois Department of Revenue. We're even checking your payables to make sure you're getting the best deal in Nycor, in, or your gas and electric and telecom. So, it's a wide-ranging scope of audits that we're able to do, um, without using the, the village's time or money. We also have attorneys, Cozen, O'Connor, that go after back taxes, so we're not using the attorney of the village. It's, it's part of our, part of our, if we make anything. We assume the risk in the whole proposition. Sorry.
Oh, uh, go ahead. Did I understand you to say that, uh, you, you've made this presentation before? I recall that in, when you made the presentation.
Correct.
So, we did not take on your services at that time?
Not at that time, there was,
So, you've never done this for University Park?
We have never done it for University Park.
And have you checked any of those utilities, uh, to see perhaps of what the possibilities are?
We can't unless we sign a non-disclosure agreement and a letter of agency to actually ask them for their data, because we have to get that data from them to identify where the anomaly is.
Mrs. Dealworth, we have a question.
Yes, for that split, forty-five, forty, forty-five, fifty-five. Is that negotiable? Seems like it's pretty, you know, I think that it should be a little less.
Well, there, when you think about it, when you think about the money that we're actually splitting, when you're thinking of a residential address, when you look at your, your bill, your Comcast bill, or your electric bill, we're splitting two to three dollars on, on a residential address. If it's, if it's commercial or industrial, um, it's a little bit more, so, it's that, it's not splitting fifty-five percent of five thousand dollars. It can add up, and we need to keep our legs on that, help the municipalities.
Yeah, it's a big, to me, it's a big thing, because we have an industrial park, which could be a lot of money that could be, should have came to University Park, but it did not.
Correct.
Understand the services, which is great, because they're not continuously ordered, but, uh, fifty-five, forty-five, it's pretty high when you have an industrial park. So, some of these communities don't have an industrial park within them, so, they have businesses. Even the Plastics and all these other businesses don't have as much as we have.
I understand.
So, I would think that the split should be much more negotiable.
Well, we do try and keep it standard across the state, so that nobody feels, oh, they're giving something, they're giving something more than, than I am, so we kind of keep it standard that way. Um, we've done a consortium, where I've like, done in Lake County, and done, you know, ten communities together, and got a lower rate. Um, but for a single community, that's what turned on our leaders.
You mentioned, uh, that you got forty-two thousand for Matson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because they've got, they've got your rear end on the counter.
Oh, I'm sorry. They didn't pay for that, that's for sure.
When you mentioned that you've, uh, found forty-two thousand dollars for the village of Matson.
Mm-hmm. You want to know what the area?
Do you provide the references from all these other communities?
Cool, yes, we do, um, so yes, I, I, I have, I have let them know that I can get Glenwood and.
Tom, again.
Well, Glenwood, and, and Matson, and Crestwood, um, yes, I have those references. We did find that in the area of AT&amp;T, because they, like I said, they put, they had exemptions on the bill, um, that shouldn't have been on there, um, and things like that, so we're able to get back money, um, in that, um, in that realm. Any other questions?
No, mayor, uh, uh, I know it's here as a, uh, as a presentation, not a discussion, so it wouldn't go on the next agenda, so can we take this under advisement for the trustees, so they can bring it to you for whatever board meeting is pleasurable?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Nice seeing you again, brother.
Nice seeing you.
All right.
Thank you. If there are motion to adjourn, there's one more thing with ICLG, with the Fire Board Fire Insurance. Come on, real quick, real quick.
Good evening, uh, my name is Patrick Delf, um, and basically ICLG is a, uh, ethical coalition of local government, and, um, my part here is for the fire protection, uh, program. So basically, we're collecting the two percent, currently that is a tax that is collected by the IML. Uh, our program is, uh, to make it faster, cheaper, and better for you. So we partnered with Asavar and Local Gov, Local Gov, uh, is a technology that helps us and cut the cost that, uh, by half of what you're paying right now. Currently, you're getting the IML a five percent commission on, uh, the tax collection, we're getting it by half. Uh, also, we including, um, reporting, so it's, everything is done online, you're getting the money right away. Currently, you have to wait until the end of the year to receive your check from the IML. Uh, we can, you're receiving the money right away with us, uh, so immediately in June, around June fifteenth to July fifteenth. Plus, you have full reporting online that are available, that allows transparency. And, uh, finally, we also including, uh, with the help of Asavar, uh, an auditory, a review process. So basically, we're formatting all the boundaries of the fire department, fire district, who you're serving, and we do the same thing, a review, making sure insurance companies that are from outside of Illinois pay their dues, uh, we know they don't, because none of the forms currently are standard. Um, and the two percent is basically about hundred different line items, uh, where you should collect that money. So by doing it online with Local Gov, we're standardizing the process, we help the review process, and we're saving you money. ICLG is about five years now, it's, uh, it, it's a collection of, uh, mayors, uh, um, sorry, lawyers, and basically, they do, they're in Springfield, and they're mostly lobbying to change, uh, things and bring back to local governments. Uh, my part here, it's an additional program to bring back the revenue to you, and being able to control your, your revenue. So basically, with our program, you're collecting the tax, and you co, you're managing it, and you're reviewing everything you, you're supposed to get.
Think of it as the State Farm All-State Revenge, so essentially, any out-of-state insurance company gets charged a two percent tax for doing business in the state of Illinois. That money is collected by the Illinois Municipal League and then distributed to all of the municipalities, um, and fire districts within the state. So I always tell people, think of it as State Farm All-State Revenge against, because they have similar taxes that they pay in other states. This is their revenge. The money generally is, what happens is IML collects the money, and then they distribute it in November to all the municipalities. In theory, um, and we have some other clients that have, what happens is, they're trying to, they're, and no one really can figure out what the tax that, how much of the cut IML gets back, and I have never figured it out. Um, I think they have a guy, like a little advocate, so they do that, but the idea is that you're going to get the money monthly, and, and hopefully you're paying less than what IML is charging.
Right, it's not monthly, sorry, for the correction, it's yearly, we can change the collection.
Okay, you don't change the collection.
But yeah, you're correct, uh, last year, uh, IML, I believe, was charging seven percent. Since we came into place with that program, they already cut the cost to five percent. So this year, you're paying five percent, so already by our effort, the competition, you already saved some money. But no matter what they give you, charge you, look at it by half. Um, we're nonprofits, so I'll probably not make money, really, it's to just pay for whatever it is.
You will always be there when they charge you.
Correct.
Always.
Always.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion to adjourn, mayor. Motion by trustee Brooks, second by trustee Williams, all in favor? Poles, none? Thank everybody for coming out on this beautiful, close to spring evening. Yeah, we'll get help, we'll get these.
Coke takes over here, come on.
And, and happy birthday, trustee, purpose, Matt Love.